Fantastic. Thank you, everybody, for our September twelfth, twenty twenty-three board meeting. We will call the meeting to order and we will begin by entertaining motions.
I move to enter an executive session for the purpose of discussions about the whole pending or current litigation, related negotiations pursuant to Article fourteen of the Civil Service Law, and matters leading to the appointment, employment, promotion, demotion, discipline, suspension, dismissal, or removal of a particular person or corporation.
Second.
Move by Karen, second by Joe. Discussion, questions, conversation. Hearing none, all in favors. The motion passing unanimously. We will be back as soon as we can, the folks. Be on the lookout for us. You're returning from executive session. We'll come back into the meeting and we'll begin with our agenda or continue with our agenda. Are there any modifications to the agenda? Hearing none, we'll continue. Our next agenda item is four point one, Learning Forward, ICSD K twelve Insight Culture and Climate Survey Results, and I will hand this over to Dr. Graham.
Yeah, I'm gonna invite some folks up. Thank you. I'm gonna invite a team of folks up. Lynn Concalci is gonna come on up. With our on our team, Karen Arnold, Principal at Caroline, Lauren Rice, Principal at Boynton.
Right.
And we'll start with Lynn with initial framing and then we'll pick it up.
Good evening, everybody. It's nice to see you. This is my first time in front of many of you, so I look forward to more conversations in the future. Tonight, we're gonna talk about the results from our twenty twenty-two, twenty-three annual survey. So surveys that were administered in April and May, April through May of last year to caregivers, students, and staff. Have the clicker here. I know. There we go. I wanna make clear that our survey is one part of our holistic data portfolio that we are working to use to really evaluate our efforts towards Learning Forward ICSD and the progress we're making towards realizing that as the way learning, teaching and learning happens here in the Ithaca City School District. So we'll be having quarterly data conversations as we move forward, where I look forward to sharing next time, bringing some more student voice, looking at our original cohorts of student interviews that we conducted last spring and doing some analysis of the over one thousand open response we got to the surveys. So deeper theme analysis around that. And then we'll be digging into quality or qualitative measures later on, or sorry, quantitative measures later on with our equity report card and finishing off with a final data conversation to be determined based on your questions and needs and how the year goes for us. All right, so this is just the start, I guess. And I'll ask that as we go through the presentation that you just hold your questions to the end, I'll be sharing district level results and then Lauren and Karen will be talking specifically about their building level and how they're using the survey data to inform their work this year. So before we talk about what people said, I think it's important to pay attention of who said it, who we heard from. On this slide, you'll see the number of responses we had in each stakeholder group. So students, parents, and guardians and staff. You know, on surveys, a twenty-five percent response rate is considered good. So I'm actually quite pleased with these response rates that we had last year. Of course, we always want to hear from more folks, but this is a good, good amount. Something to keep in mind is that although all stakeholders were invited to participate, not all chose to participate. So while the results from this survey provide valuable insight to us about what people are thinking and feeling and experiencing in our schools, they are representative of the people who responded only, right? So it's not appropriate to generalize this to the population as a whole, right? So that's something to keep in mind, that this is insight into what's going on, but not the end-all and the end-all. Another thing I feel is really important for us to note, especially with our commitment to being an anti-racist organization and our goals around equity, is looking at how the distribution of folks who responded compared to the population of our district as a whole. So you can see in this slide, the column on the left represents the race, race, ethnicity breakdown of our student population at the time of the survey. So that was at the time, April to May. And in the student responses and then how students were identified by their caregivers and their responses, we can see that we have subgroups that are likely underrepresented. So folks have the opportunity to say, I don't want to identify within any of these subgroups. You can see that eight percent of students and thirteen percent of caregiver respondents chose that option. But especially for our Black and African-American student, Hispanic or Latino, there's likely an underrepresentation in those responses. We, you know, at the very least, we'd want to see it, see all the percentages equal. So it's kind of like a sampling that represents. I would actually like to see our traditionally marginalized populations overrepresented in our responses because those are the folks that we don't hear from and who traditionally our systems are not designed designed for. So that would be an indicator of success for me in terms of participation moving forward. All right, let's hop in. So overall satisfaction, this is just the question. Overall, how satisfied were you with your experiences in school this year or working in the ICSD or your child's experience in our school this year? Students are lowest satisfaction rate, right? We wanna see, this is really a baseline for us to build from. I was thinking about this. I was like, oh, man, if I saw this rating for an Uber and Airbnb, I probably wouldn't even book it, right? So like, this is something that I wanna see shift. And throughout these slides, you're gonna see that we're just looking at a snapshot of last year's results. I'm not sharing any comparative analysis. The reason for that is our last full survey was in twenty twenty, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, which was the year of when we had a lot of students and staff, both learning and teaching virtually. COVID protocols and procedures really dominated our schools. And Learning Forward was actually really just in its inception at that point. So I look at this most recent survey as a new baseline for us to build from. So moving forward in future years, you'll see that comparison year to year. All right. So the rest of the presentation, I'll show how select survey questions align to both our district goals and the tenants of Learning Forward ICSD. The board, you have the full results to all of the questions already. They're also posted to Board Docs, so that's available to the public. So we're not gonna see every question tonight. These board goals and board vision of success that you're seeing up on the slide right now, this, these were board goals that were adopted in July of two thousand seventeen, right? And they're, they're still the goals we use around excellence, equity, communication. So up here, you can see for around culture of excellence, that one of the visions for success were that students would report that they have a positive relationship with at least one adult in school. Ninety-three percent of our student respondents said, agreed or strongly agreed that they had this, which is definitely something we wanna celebrate, right? This is strong results. We wanna continue to build on that. Another vision of success around this culture of excellence is a rigorous and relevant curriculum that students find meaningful and engaging and getting them ready for the future. This is an area where we have room for improvement, right? I think especially looking at areas around relevance. So is, are my assignments interesting? Are my assignments related to my life? Only eleven percent of student respondents agreed or strongly agreed with that. For me and talking with my colleagues, this is a real, I think, opportunity for us to lean more heavily into our anti-marginalization curriculum work, really thinking about the lessons, the units that we are putting in front of kids and how we are connecting that learning to the young people in front of us, right? So curriculum work, moving these numbers is definitely a focus for us. When we look at our equity goals around eliminating race, class, gender, ability, socioeconomic status as predictors of student success, one of the indicators of success is that students would feel that their instructional program reflects their culture and identity. Here we can see that there's quite a gap between how students are feeling and experiencing this in schools versus how teachers are feeling or educators are feeling about the opportunities they're providing to young people. So just under forty percent of students feel that teachers take time to learn about their cultures and incorporate their student cultures into the classroom and curriculum, whereas educators were right around ninety percent for both of those things. So this is an area where we're really gonna wanna see that gap closing, right? And it makes me think about, Lauren and I were just talking about this, in many ways, helping to make, teachers and educators helping to make the instructional decisions they're making more clear to students, right? Sometimes we do things in the classroom and kids aren't really aware, right? So we might be thinking that we are building connections and culture and helping kids get to know each other and connect with one another and kids might not be aware that's happening. I think also bringing the evaluation right down to the classroom level where we're encouraging educators to use exit tickets and informal surveys at the end of units and instructional cycles to get feedback from students about how they experience those specific instructional activities, right? So really moving evaluation from this like annual survey level to the classroom level where change can be made. This is, again, speaks to me too about helping educators kind of shift much of the professional learning that we've been focusing on from kind of an academic and theoretical place to really changing what happens for kids on a day-to-day basis. We shift now a little bit from teaching and learning to more a focus on our caregivers and communication. So this is a set of questions that were asked of caregivers about communication in the district. The board vision of success was eighty percent of parents would say they received meaningful, timely, clear, and engaging communication with the district. You can see we're in the seventies for much of that in terms of is, is the communication engaging, around fifty-eight percent. I'm just gonna go to the next slide because it's directly related. This is about meaningful opportunities to be heard again around the board, the district's communication goal and the board's vision for success. So in terms of engaging and meaningful, that's our biggest area for growth, right? And I think recent investments in our communication team, right, really speaks to our commitment to working on really improving our communication with all stakeholder groups. And I know something that our communications team has been talking about and thinking about how they can do more of is really bringing more student voice into our communications, right? Caregivers love, love to hear about what their kids are doing, right? I think the more we can elevate what young people are doing in our district and how we're talking about what's going on, the more engaging and meaningful it will feel. That's just one example of how we are trying to respond to this. We're gonna shift from those board goals, or sorry, district goals and board visions of success to our Learning Forward ICSD tenants. So we have four tenants, tenants within Learning Forward ICSD. Students as partners and leaders is the first one. Last year, a team of folks at district office, we worked really hard to ensure that our survey had questions that were really aligned to those tenants and how we're gonna help measure going forward. So this group of questions about was new last year and is really trying to help us start getting an understanding of whether or not students are feeling the work that we're trying to do to really bring them in partnership with us. You can see here that, you know, between forty and forty-four to fifty-four percent was the response rate. So we definitely want to see more students saying they agree or strongly agree with these items. Another interesting data point with these questions is that for all of them, about thirteen percent of students said they don't know, which is one of the, one of the highest, highest number of kids saying, I don't know for the questions. And to me, that really speaks about a need to really engage students and helping students become more aware of what we're trying to do, right? More aware of what we're trying to do in terms of partnership with students, more aware of opportunities we've already created, but then also talking with students about what this would actually look like and feel like to them, right? So when we have our student curriculum consultants working with teachers over the summer to give feedback on the anti-marginalization curriculum units they're creating, that's one way, right? We're trying to make this a reality, but I'm not sure if students would see it that way, right? So I think that's an area for great work for us this year. Second tenant is educator identity work. So teachers digging in or educators more broadly, not just teachers, educators digging in and really thinking about the different aspects of their culture, racial, ethnic background and how that influences kind of how they show up in the world and how they show up in their work and how they interact with students. As you can see here, educators that responded are feeling really good about the work they've been doing around educator identity and their their own ability to really think about how their personal identity influences the work they do and perceptions of power in interactions with others. This is definitely something we wanna celebrate, right? This is great. We've put a huge investment into educator identity work in our professional development program, our micro credential for culturally and linguistic responsive teaching. The identity strand was the first developed and has had the most teachers participate in. Again, when I think back to what we saw earlier on the slide about how students are feeling about how this is playing out in the classroom, we have work to do, right? Again, this is that connecting kind of the academic and professional development seat time learning to the actual classroom experience on a day-to-day basis. And that's always the hardest part, professional development, right? That transfer. And so I know myself, as one of the people that helps support professional development in the district, I'll be really thinking about that. How are we doing that transfer? Our micro credential program includes a performance assessment for educators where they actually do a presentation to talk about how what they learned in their PD have changed what they're doing for students, right? So I think focusing, focusing on those portfolio presentations as part of our educator micro credential program is a way we're gonna start seeing change, encouraging people, administrators, teachers, and our conversations to be more explicit about examples of what this actually looks like and sounds like in the classroom when I see it. Can I name it? And how do I share that with others? Let's have a couple more. Anti-racist curriculum for all. This is tenant number three. Very similar to what we've seen, right? This gap between student perspective and educator perspective. So about closing that gap and ensuring that transfer is happening. Just leave it there for a minute so folks can read. And the last tenant of Learning Forward is around structures of support. So in terms here, you can see this, we had questions within all three surveys for this. How supported do you feel by your school? Caregivers are feeling more supported than students in the, in those that responded, right? And when we were thinking about social and emotional health and well-being, again, we can see that our students are lowest responding rate. So again, how are we ensuring that not only that we have the supports there, right? But that students know what's available to them, that staff know what's available to them, that caregivers know what's available to them, how those resources can be accessed, and then how we're responding to continue to make, make people feel more supportive. The final set of questions is more around student and staff well-being in general. So not directly tied to Learning Forward ICSD, but connections and feelings of belongingness are really kind of strong indicators of well-being and widely used indicators of well-being. So I wanted to include those here. The research I've been reading recently talks about how belongingness actually is more important than connection, right? So I'm excited to see that our numbers are higher for belonging than for connection. I mean, obviously, we always want to see more and higher. And then that health and safety piece, you know, I think digging in deeper about what aspects, what aspects of the environment or what aspects of your health and safety, is it, is it physical health? Is it feelings of being safe, like finding out more from folks what that, what's preventing them from agreeing or strongly agreeing? So that is in a nutshell, the big takeaways and what it's making us think about. I'm gonna turn it over to, I think, Caroline, to Karen Arnold first to talk about Caroline. Click away.
Hi, everyone. Karen Arnold, the lead principal at Caroline, if I have not met you. We, we, me, myself, and two other staff members, one, my CERIA data strategist, and then Ellen Irish, who is our equity liaison mentor. And looking at this data, we spent about four hours going through the data and looking at what surprised us, what made us curious, what did we wonder about, what did we wanna know more? And I just picked two slides, one for caregivers and then one for staff. Students weren't, it's important to know that students at the elementary level were not, didn't, weren't given this questionnaire. So the first one is parents and guardians. And one of the things that really stood out to us was the meaningful opportunities. We had a little discussion about what does ICSD mean? Does that mean Caroline? Does that mean us? Does it mean? And we decided we were just gonna say it meant Caroline because that is what we have control over. So we just, we put the word Caroline in there, knowing that anything we did would be better, you know, would be a step forward. So we were really looking at meaningful opportunities to be heard, really stuck out for us. And if we gave meaningful opportunities, then hopefully the other things would fall into place with engaging. One thing that I realized, there was another question like that where with the meaningful is how do I respond? And so there an avenue, and I realized I wasn't giving families an avenue for communication. I was giving them information, but I wasn't inviting them in to communicate. So one thing that I will be doing different is conversations with Karen. And I'm working with PTA and doing three different ones a month and decided to do different times. So an eight oh five, eight oh five being we do have a lot of parent drop-off at that time. And then a one, one fifteen is we have a lot of parent pickup and then a seven thirty virtual to invite families in at the PTA meeting last night, working with some PTA members to decide are there areas of focus. We've also talked about putting a survey together on what would you want these conversations to be around? So we're, it's a work in progress, but that is something different that I will be doing from this data. We, with this also, we talked about news, classroom news. We did, we were unsure at, from grade level or classroom teachers, do they do weekly newsletters? I know some that send them to me that I asked, do they do bi-weekly? Do they do monthly? What does it look like? It really getting an idea from the staff. And this goes along with about fourteen, twelve to fourteen people. We lost a couple of staff. They just went to a different building anyways. For the micro credential strand for family engagement, we read the book last year. So this intersects really well with, with how do we communicate and engage families? So this data is helping that book group with our action plan on what we're gonna do different. And we're gonna be looking at how often do we communicate? Do we communicate after the learning? Do we communicate before the learning? Do we have questions in our news to families that when they sit down that night, they can ask about the learning versus, you know, the week after? We're gonna encourage different staff members, if you do a monthly, would you be willing to do bi-monthly? Would you be, if you do bi-weekly, would you be willing to do weekly? So that we can see growth in that area. I send home weekly news, again, though I don't know how engaging it is. So I really wanna tease out what do families want? How can I make that more engaging? But the next one is staff. And there were a few things with staff, but really the one that stood out to me was my principal or supervisor makes me feel like my job is important. And like also, like I receive recognition or praise. I know I can do better at that in a more intentional way. So I'm doing it more like, hey, I really liked when you did. Now maybe it's a note. They're busy. They didn't hear it. So we went through on different action steps that we can do with that. We also talked about having a staff spotlight bulletin board. So I had an ESP who's been in our building for many years, a lot longer than I, that said, Karen, I don't think some people here even know my name. That, that's, we need to do better with that. So a staff spotlight, maybe fun facts about different staff. Also talk to PTA, maybe how they can support me in that. So those are some of the action steps that we're taking, that we used from this data and moving it forward. We will also be working, looking at it at a staff meeting and at the equity meeting that we also have, a staff hasn't had their, had time to put their eyes on this and be able to tease out some of the questions that we have around this. We were encouraged that there was a lot more people that responded this time around than in the past and also had comments that said, wow, I didn't think anybody looked at that. So I think that the more staff and families know that we are really using this data to create an action plan, that we will get more responses.
Good evening. Not too far. Okay, so I pulled a couple of data points from Boynton survey results. And some of these are going to look very similar to what you saw for the district level. They fall pretty, pretty, they're well-aligned. And so this one is looking at anti-racist curriculum for all. One of the Learning Forward tenants, as far as how educators are feeling in terms of their confidence level to create opportunities for students to learn about themselves and for others and opportunities to examine power, entitlement, oppression, and equity within their curriculum. And then students' experience with that. So again, this is an area that we're really focused on in terms of closing that gap because there's definitely a gap between what educators feel like they're providing and what students are telling us that they're experiencing. And this next set of data points looks at equity in terms of And this next set of data points looks at equity in terms of identity and culture. And again, student experience and what educators are reporting that they're providing. So the educators who responded said that a hundred percent, really high score there, that they are taking time to learn about their students' cultures. And again, incorporating that culture into the classroom and curriculum was also very high there. And we have definitely some work to do. And this also brought up a number of questions for us in terms of, do we have a common language between our students and our educators? The things that educators are providing and the activities that they're creating and, and making sure that students are viewing that as, you know, an effort to understand their culture because it seems like there's, there's definitely some gaps there. And so we are going to be working on a few different things to try to move some of that data forward. And so one thing that we are working on as a staff, the two-week challenge is what we're calling it at the beginning of the year. There's always a really strong tension for educators to meet their students, take time to get them, to know them, build community, but also they need to start presenting curriculum. So this year, what I asked staff to do is to try to find some way for the first two weeks every day to have some sort of identity building activity and some sort of community building activity. And we're going to talk and assess and see, you know, how many people are able to do it. And then, you know, what sort of differences are we seeing? What sort of differences are they noticing? And then as well, following up with our students to see whether that made a difference in how they're feeling in those learning environments. And sharing data in our team meetings and home bases. So the data from these surveys, we are going to be sharing that with staff and with students during home bases so that everyone is able to see it and to have conversations, ask questions and join in the, the plans that we have to move some of this data forward. Our equity team is going to be working on creating lesson banks. So gathering lessons specifically focused around identity and the anti-marginalization curriculum work that they're going to share with the rest of the staff. So if you have someone who is not sure where to get started, that's going to be a place that they can dive in and have access to. And we're also going to be starting a student ambassador program, which is going to serve a, a number of different needs that we have in the school. Our student ambassadors are going to be a group of students that are going to be there to welcome new students. They often like to come and do tours when we have, you know, open house or we welcome in the fifth graders and be a part of that. And we're also going to meet monthly to get feedback from students. And one of my goals is to really make sure that the students who are part of the student ambassador program is really representative of our student population so that we are hearing a wide range of voices. And, and then finally, we are going to build in time and space for micro credential shareout because we have a number of folks who have gone through micro credential strands and have wonderful changes that they are implementing in their classroom. And I would like to give them the opportunity to share with their colleagues what it is that they're doing so that we can start to, you know, spread some of that work. Any questions?
We're ready for questions.
Well, I'm sure there's a number of questions. I can see people are already eager to grab the mic. Before we engage in questions, I want to remind folks, if you heard Lynn's introduction, we're going to engage in quarterly data conversations. We are not going to solve it this evening. If we did, we would be amazing. So just keep that in mind that we're not going to be able to get to all questions or the ways in which the follow-up for folks, right? But the goal is to sort of engage in a little bit of dialogue, but I'll also be mindful of time. I just want folks to understand. So I think I saw a couple of hands, Karen and Erin, and then we'll go to some other folks.
So instead of saying, asking my 10 questions I had at this time, I will win. But I noticed in the first, one of the first few slides where you showed the difference between the race ethnicity, but you said it was stated PK, pre-K to 12, but yet this was six to 12. So that racial breakdown, was it six to 12 or that's for the whole school district?
Great question. So the, the enrollment breakdown in the first column was PK 12 because we surveyed all caregivers, right? So it's a, it's a sampling of K-12. That demographic breakdown, I'd be happy to share out. It looks very similar at all levels of our organization, right? So the numbers you saw in that first column are almost identical to what is six 12 only.
So I'll just ask another question, but I wanted to say thank you very much because Karen and Lauren, you answered a question I had about what are you doing in your respective schools? And then I will throw it out there, not to hear a response yet, but for, how can we get more, more educators to participate? How do we connect more with ITA and other collective bargaining units? And what are they doing with educators to see where do we need to go from here?
Great, Karen, or Lynn, a clarifying question. When we use the term educators, we're referring to all folks in the building?
Right, so in the survey, it asked respondents to self-identify what their role was in the building. The bank of questions, some questions were served to all responding staff and faculty. Those that are represented in the educator subgroup were members of the ITA, which includes all related service providers, so speech, OT, PT and so forth. We also include ESPs in that. So basically, all, all faculty that have direct contact with students in the classroom within the instructional space.
You can share. I'm going to try to limit my questions. I've got like 30. But I, I'm going to do two. One would be, you know, we see the answers about some of the cultural relations and teachers being 90% and students being like 50 or, I mean, like the one was the culture gap was 39% and 37% of students feeling like staff is taking time to learn about their culture. And I can't help but think most of the respondents were white. So is there a demographic breakdown of responses to get a better idea of what these numbers mean and which students don't feel that their culture is being understood?
We do have, we do have the data at the subgroup level that we can, we can look at that further. So in terms of that chart, we know what the representation overall responses were, but we can look at that at the subgroup level. And I'd be happy to share more about that. Yes.
I would love that, maybe next quarter.
We may not be able to share some of that data because it may become quickly identifiable.
And we don't, right, and we don't do that. We also don't share out that data broken down at the building level in those race ethnicity subgroups because it does get small very quickly, right? So when we're looking at district-wide demographics, we have enough responses in those subgroups. But at the building level, very quickly not.
But can I, can I throw in a question here? One of the, the question didn't say, how does a, how does a teacher or an educator or staff respond to my culture? It says your teachers created opportunities for students to discuss race, racism and other forms of oppression. And it goes into that so that it's taken away from the student saying, they may not be connected to me, but how am I learning in this environment from others? So I, so I don't.
No, I agree. I mean, some of those questions were more broad, but I think the one that really struck me was the culture gap when it was learning of my own culture. But I mean, I think I would just be interested in more of a breakdown in general to better understand who's feeling what. But my other question would be, and this might actually be more for the student reps than from you all, but I, when I was seeing the discrepancies between student responses and teachers' responses and how different people felt about learning and how understood they were, I was remembering how I felt as a, as a student in high school and middle school. And now as an adult, how differently I see it? I, I just remember thinking that I just saw teachers as professionals and nothing more. And now as an adult, I know how hard it is to juggle everything. And I wonder if in that they understand how much teachers, how hard they're trying and how nobody is perfect? No adult is perfect, no teacher is perfect? And I wonder if there's any understanding in that with these surveys, like a little bit of empathy for these, these educators?
So follow-up to Erin's and Karen's. Is there an interactive dashboard, like a Tableau dashboard or anything where we can look at disaggregated data? A, and then B, what is the threshold for cutoff when you, if you don't have, like, is it an N of five in which you won't disaggregate? Do you know what the cutoff is?
So we have used 10 historically in the district, yes.
Okay, great.
I think I saw one of the students that wanted to respond to that question. Am I projecting here?
Um, yeah, I was just going to say about the question in terms of is empathy at like the top of students' minds when they're responding to the survey? And at least in terms of what I would consider the, the average high school student, I, I, I don't think so. I don't know if that's, I, I, I think in terms of responding to the survey, you know, it's something that we do in the middle of the school day. You know, there's a lot of things going on in between classes. I don't, I don't know how much thought students are like, I don't know, like what's like kind of the breakdown is. But I mean, in terms of the average student, I, I don't, I don't think they would be, I think they would be considering more from like their own personal point of view rather than considering maybe hardships that Ms. Pro was talking about. Yeah, I don't know, something to consider.
Yeah, I would love to just add on to that as, as a student with a mother who is an educator. I think me personally, I would look at this from a lens of compassion and empathy. And I think that when surveys like this are being filled out, that can be an important reiteration. And on the other end, for educators stepping outside of, oh, I feel like I'm good at this and being like, do I think my students think I'm good at this? And in, in general, stepping outside of your own space and acknowledging the difference between individuals, whether that's an educator or a student.
With regard to the question, I think one of the biggest things that students have a tough time grasping with regards to their teachers and having empathy for them is that, you know, curriculums are dense, packed, hard to get through. And sometimes it isn't 100% reasonable to expect that a teacher is going to be able to understand perfectly every single student's cultural background or at least be 100% perfect at it, even when they're trying. And I think there is sometimes among a certain, at least select group of the student body, a certain demand for perfection from their educators, which is nearly impossible to achieve. Especially, I think, in courses which culminate in an AP exam or something like that. It's, it is very hard, at least from my teacher's admission, to branch out into subjects which maybe aren't directly included in the course material, but are important to discuss. And I think that, that issue is something that most students don't really grasp or at least don't think about.
Claire, and then we'll go on to other board questions.
I also think that it just depends on the subject. Like we have more of an expectation for classes and like social studies and history to be talking about this kind of stuff in comparison to like math classes. We don't really have that expectation of like, you know, your teacher is like trying to understand whether it's like your cultural background or something like that. So it just really depends. But I think at some point, like students kind of try to think about like empathy and trying to like understand the teacher's hard work.
Questions from other board members. Joe, please.
Yeah. One of the ways to get at the issue of when there's a discrepancy between student and, and staff perceptions of things might be to ask people how important they felt the issue is. And that gets a little bit about what one of the folks over here was saying about, you know, differences in course, subject matter or something. So I don't think you could do that on every question, but I have seen surveys where people would say, how satisfied are you? And how important do you think this issue is? Because if someone's not particularly satisfied, but rates it low as being of importance is not as significant an issue as if someone is very satisfied and rates it as a very important thing, as some people will with some of the identity work, we hope, and, and other people won't. So I think that's a, that's a piece that's missing. And I don't know if there's a way, I don't know how much input we as a district have into how the survey is put together or if there are different ways of doing it without losing our, our new, new baseline. But I, I think there's something along with what Erin was saying about doing some closer looks at who was responding to which questions. Because, you know, obviously, if it turns out that one group is always dissatisfied, that helps us target our intervention a whole lot more than 57% are satisfied. So if that makes sense, I, I look forward to further discussions with you, actually. I think this is, I'm glad this is just the beginning because I think we have a lot to talk about.
For, for knowledge sharing, we partner with K-12 Insight, who is a research firm that helps us develop this survey. So every question, myself, Lily Talkett, we worked, I, I worked closely with their team to review all the questions that go on this. They look deeply at what we as a district are saying that we value and helping us ask questions that get at that. And also advising when there are questions that I propose or somebody else's proposes and they say that's not actually going to get you what you want or why are you asking that? So we do have support in that and I will bring these questions to them about how we might be able to.
Because I had, I had one other thought and this, this may not be a very popular one in this room. But I, I'm pleased that many of our staff feel very satisfied about their own work and about some other things that we've been working as a district toward. But I think there is a certain demand, even when you're told the survey is anonymous and even when you feel that, you know, it's the end of the year or whatever. But I can't imagine having answered a survey like this years ago when I worked on the district and having, and having said, no, I don't think I'm reaching out to my students, even if I hadn't done a thing toward reaching out to my students in terms of their culture or identity. I mean, there's just, and I don't know how K-12 Insight looks at that sort of thing or how we look at that sort of thing. But it's like, of course, all of the teachers said they're doing a great job at that. They know that's something that this district, that this administration values highly. So I just, I wonder how we, how can we trust any of that in a sense?
It's part of a lot of our professional development, especially the educator identity work. We talk about things we need to interrupt as an organization, one being perfectionism, one being defensiveness and one being a right to comfort. To answer that question in the negative would require people to be uncomfortable. Would have one be critically self-perceptive about their own perfectionism and would obviously lead to a situation where you can't be defensive. We have a lot of work to do to interrupt that supremacy culture that contributes to this kind of data. What I am pleased by is the ways in which we're using the data to learn instead of judge, which is a quantum shift for most school districts I've been a part of. If you looked at data like this and we've expected to use it to learn or judge someone, and the question that a table like this would be why and who, that's what dominated. I've heard how and where and what tonight, and that leads to a learning dialogue. If our numbers had have been in the eighties and nineties across the board in the ways in which this was constructed, people could question our humanity because it's not human to have 90 cents across the board here. Particularly in a culture and an organization that has been rooted in supremacy and exclusion. So we have a lot of work to do just to reflect on how we show up in a survey like this because what you just noted was something that we all grapple with. And as superintendent who evaluated based on numbers like this, yeah, I don't want my numbers to be less than 50. And I'm, I'm, I was handing out candy last week, hoping people would answer their affirmatively. But that came back to my own defensiveness and perfectionism. And in no way would that allow for us to learn about how to implement anti-mobility curriculum. I hope that helps.
Again, I think it's a good start for a discussion.
Moira than Albert?
This is a question about levels of participation in the survey.
Um, this is a question about, uh, levels of participation in the survey and, and increasing them. And so I would invite the students to weigh in on what they think would increase student participation in the survey, or what barriers are there currently to participation in the survey?
Um, I think in general, personal outreach and, um, making students feel like their response are neat, responses are needed and wanted. Um, I believe you talked about just some imbalance with, um, students of color answering the survey, and I think, um, that could be a big part of it. I know a lot of students who just would see something like this in their email and kind of be like, oh, well, it's not actually going to do anything anyway. What's the point? You know what I mean? And I think, um, you know, I mean, you touched on it as well, but like letting students know what the efforts are that are, um, being made. And I think this survey is a great effort, and I think, um, I don't know, just relaying like what's actually happening with this data, um, and the importance of their voice within that, I think would really, um, help participation.
Yeah, thanks.
Hi, um, is this working?
Yeah.
Okay. Um, just adding on to what Stella said about knowing what the survey is and knowing what it's doing. Maybe there could be like in the high school, some announcements in the couple of days leading up to and on the day of. Hi guys, this is like what we think the survey can do. This is what we're asking you, and this is what we're planning to use it for. So, you know, please participate. I think it could just go a long way hearing it repeated and kind of knowing that it would like will be used, because sometimes not always, not in the school surveys, like, I don't know, sometimes they're not used. So I, I don't know, I think that would be helpful. Thanks.
Yeah, one more. Oops.
I don't mean to come across as pessimistic, and this might not be the most popular idea amongst students, but I think that sometimes when referring to high school students, things have to be mandated in order for us to do it, because we won't do it otherwise, no matter how much love and care is putting into it, into it. It's kind of the nature of the child. So.
What about the candy idea?
Well, bribery, bribery is an effective strategy, but, uh, you're gonna need a lot of candy. So I think I remember two years ago, we did something like this, and I don't know if you got higher results, but I do remember that there was a lot more pressure for students to do it. And I at least saw a lot more students engaging in the survey. And so I think that if we did one of those times where we alter the bell schedule and really tell teachers they have to enforce their students take this at seventh period, yada, yada, for fifteen minutes, I think there could be at least marginally higher participation.
Stella, you were, you still want to speak?
Yeah. Both backwards?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think with stuff like this, it is also about transparency. Because at least at LACS, there's a lot of, you know, beginning of the year surveys of like, oh, so how do you learn? And the question of like, how do you learn? What works well for you? And often students are left feeling like somewhat disappointed in that. Because most of the time, surveys like that aren't actually felt by students in the curriculum change. So when surveys like this come across students, um, there's a level of like, well, what's actually going to happen with it? So I think transparency, transparency especially, but also a sense of like urgency as well. Um, of students need to feel like this is going somewhere for them to partake. Um, another point that I think might be important is also just general publicity. I know for a lot of students, they aren't super active on their emails. Um, but, or canvas or like stuff like that, but making it even like a, I don't know, like a poster or like an announcement or stuff like that where they just see it all the time, you're gonna get more responses that way.
So I heard Zara say we use TikToks, we'll make that happen. Any other board questions?
Yeah, but I had a few things. Um, I guess one thing, I thi- I think probably the, the most important thing is, um, you know, figuring out, I think like to what extent we, and this is a little bit piggybacking on Joe, but in what, to what extent we can extrapolate the data, because you started out the presentation, um, not, not on purpose, but I mean, in a little way, like it could be undermining the rest of whatever you're gonna say after it by saying like, well, it's a small sample and, you know, it's only the people who responded. And I think when we do a survey, um, you know, we always want to be able to extrapolate the results of the survey to the whole, I mean, to some extent. And, and sometimes that has to reach a threshold of number of respondents or something and something to make it good enough that we would want to look at it and care about it. And, and the most important reason for that is that if we're going to use the survey to sort of judge and evaluate where we are on certain things and say like, well, these numbers are bad. But, you know, we, we, we're not going to worry about it because there aren't enough respondents. These numbers are good. Okay, but then we can't necessarily say that the good is good. So we either have to, we have to sort of decide, you know, one way or the other. So I think, um, to the extent that, that we could focus some effort on that, you know, would be really helpful because you bothered to do the whole survey and it's, you asked a lot of questions. Um, so I think, I think that's important. Um, I also think it would be good if we could compare our data um, in some way, you know, to, to other similarly sized schools across New York State and sort of see, you know, like how are we responding to others and, and maybe, you know, partnering with a couple of other schools and giving the, the survey with similar questions and, and sort of getting, getting a sense, because that might help to contextualize the data. Um, and the only third thing I want to say, and I know this, not a lot of time. Um, I just noticed that there was one question where you asked, um, you know, you, you were learning what you needed to know to be successful in the next grade or after graduation. Um, and that was, and, and fifty-three percent of the students said always or often, which meant forty-seven percent didn't feel like they were learning enough to make it to the next grade or graduation. Again, depending on how good the survey is, you know, I could feel one way or another about that question. But I think it would also be great to ask teachers that same question. You know, to what extent do you feel like you were able to teach what you needed to, you know, did you make it through the end of your curriculum? Like, did you do all the science that needed to be taught or all the math, you know, so that your fourth grader is going to be able to go to fifth grade and be successful? So those, I'm just throwing out a few different thoughts that I have.
Yeah, a couple of quick things. Uh, if we go back to our response rate, I think they ran a thirty percent response rate or forty percent response rate. Um, that's as high as any survey I've ever been a part of administering in a school district. So this is a significant survey for folks who want to quote us. To get that many people to respond and to respond to a survey of this type at that time of year is important. That's why you had, you had educators talking about, they spent four hours talking about the data. So anybody, you know, we, we, uh, even use the word extrapolation, um, it's not a research study and there's no finding. That would have just been a different approach to surveying and looking at information or finding information out. So as a survey, yeah, it's significant. We found out much, we're learning from it. Um, for example, the perceptions of our young people are that they don't see themselves represented in the culture, uh, in the curriculum as much as we would like. Because that number is nowhere near where we would want it to be. I don't know what that number would be. Um, but it's not where we are right now. So we could go through and speak to some things that we, uh, aren't happy with and want to significantly improve. And we can say we learned some things from administering this and to point out that a lot of folks took it. Um, if anyone are asking, but also clarifying, um, this was not a research study. There is no significant finding for the professors in the room. Yeah.
Well, I think that's what I want to speak to as well, is to remind folks that this is part of survey data. There's a forty-five page document which includes additional detailed disaggregated data that's attached to the meeting. Um, I completely understand what Adam's point is. I would be uncomfortable with trying to find some sort of norm with other districts. Uh, one, you're going to be hard pressed to find districts that have the same, uh, economic, uh, classification, racial back, back breakdown as we have in Ithaca. It is somewhat of a unique district, at least in my research across the state. And so, but, but more importantly, I think the idea is not using it to, to judge, but to, to grow and to learn. And I think, um, what I say, and my apologies for getting into professor mode, but I'm sitting here with a bunch of folks who, uh, do this and have advanced degrees as well, that one thing academia does well is teach folks how to critique. Um, in fact, we're experts in criticism. Uh, we do that exceptionally well, and I know that I have got to work hard on my students to teach them how to build, to teach them how to grow, because it's not the default of what takes place in most academic settings. And so I'm hoping that as a step, as a process, that we're using this to grow, to build, uh, to do the work that I think I heard from Caroline and Boyton, here's some data. We can talk about the way in which your question was worded. We can talk about, was it leading, was it misleading? What is the disaggregation of who supported it? And at the same point in time, we still know that we can probably communicate better. Right? At the same point in time, we still know that our communication is probably usually one way. And how do we sort of open ourselves up? And so I would prefer that we spend some of our time talking about the action steps. Then we do then breaking down a way in which a particular question is worded. Now, the great thing is that we're a nine-member board. And that's one perspective. And so that's why I love serving on the board, that we all come from different perspectives. But the growth from the way in which I see the application of the questions and the information we got back is, I would say as one board member, exactly what I'd be hoping for. And so something that I, not from anyone's, you know, intention, um, but what I didn't hear is, um, a thank you. And so I'm going to say, thank you. Uh, thank you for the data, thank you for the work. Thank you for the grind of going through the data with colleagues and how we find and for partnering with folks. Um, there's no work, there's no doubt there's work to be done. And, uh, we're going to have some fun conversations moving forward. That, um, that I'm certain of. So if there are no more questions, I want to be mindful of time as well. And the time, the reason why we put presentations early is to get folks home.
Is there a best way that you would prefer follow-up questions to be sent? Via email to?
Send it to me and Lynn, uh, one or the other, but copy both. All right. Oh, yeah.
I would say further, if that's okay by Katie, I'd say send it to the whole board. I'm sure we would all benefit from the questions that are being asked. So if you send it to Dr. Brown and to Lynn, send it to the board so we can all engage and learn different ways of how we're thinking about this data.
Awesome.
Data, data.
That doesn't matter.
Yes, thank you, thank you. We're going to continue on with our agenda. Um, Trisha, I don't know if anyone has signed up.
No one has signed up.
No one has signed up. So we're going to continue on, um, and if there are no public comments, I hope there are no board responses. And we will get to one of the, um, aspects of our agenda that we have been missing for months, which is hearing from our student reps. And, uh, we will begin with Ithaca High School reps, then go to LAC reps, if that works. So welcome. Can you, um, and for, um, austerity, can you also introduce yourself to make sure we have it on tape as well?
Um, hello, uh, my name is Claire Park. I, uh, this is my second year as a student rep to the board. Um, I see a lot of familiar faces and also some new board members. So I'm so happy to be meeting everyone and working with everyone.
Hi, everybody. My name is Cade Manseethapati. I am a eleventh grader, and this is my first year as a student rep to the board. I look forward to working with everybody and, uh, getting to know everyone on the board better.
Hi, everyone. I'm Mukun. This is also my second year as a board rep. And yeah, I'm looking forward to a great year. I'm a senior also, yeah.
Hi, um, I'm Lucene. I'm a senior. It's my first year on the board. Really excited to be working with everyone. And like Mukun said, I hope for a great year.
As, as usual, a lot of us have mixed feelings about, uh, being back in school, but we received a great welcome from everybody. Uh, the last five days of school have been pretty smooth. Freshman orientation seems to have gone well. And in most of our classes, we've moved past the awkward stage of introductions. So now we're getting back into the groove. Uh, there are a lot of announcements every period about attendance and phone, cell phone policy. So hopefully students will go to class now and not use cell phones. We are around halfway through the fall sports season with several games and matches scheduled in the next weeks. Many clubs and after-school activities have also started up. The Tatler had our first writers meeting today and published its first issue on September first. The doors, right inside the wall of doors, uh, are still a bit of a problem in regards to the traffic flow, uh, during, uh, periods of transition. Uh, unfortunately, uh, we were discussing a possible solution last year, but that won't work due to safety issues. So for now, we're just sticking to trying to put up better signage on our walls of like where to go.
Um, we were really interested to see the responses to the survey, um, just a few minutes ago, and we were ha- really happy to see positive progress in some areas. Uh, we do hope that the areas that need improvement, like course assignments being related to students' lives, or students feeling more supported by their school will change over the next few years. Um, I don't think that the vast majority of students do know a whole lot about ICSD's efforts to include students as partners in these processes. And I believe it would have a positive impact on these statistics if more students are aware. So hearing about increasing student engagement was also great. Um, we had our first meeting with Mr. Trumbull yesterday, and one of the things that we did talk about was the temperature of classrooms. Um, some rooms in upstairs G and H have been very, very hot. Uh, the air conditioning units throughout the two buildings have helped reduce the temperature, but it's still quite hot. Uh, Mr. Trumbull did tell us, however, that with our current electric wiring, it's really impossible to hook up more fans or air conditioning units, because it'll overtax the, um, wiring. But we do hope that Lake Source Cooling in the future will make the beginning of the school year more bearable in terms of temperature.
Thank you. Uh, it was really great to meet with Mr. Trumbull for the first time on Monday. Uh, we discussed standards-based grading practices, among other things. And, uh, we're excited that the new bathroom renovations have been completed, so that we don't have to run halfway across the school every day anymore. And, uh, in other club news, the nationally recognized IHS Quiz Bowl Club goes on a tournament on the twenty-third. Uh, also, there's a new advisor for student council that's still being worked out. And we look forward to collaborating with them again this year. With respect to, uh, what Mukun said, uh, we are very grateful to see that there have been some improvements made. And with regards to students being aware of all the things you guys do to try to improve the environment, I think sometimes email communication is hard, because not every student checks their email regularly. So, uh, brainstorming new avenues for communicating with students to show them all the work you guys are trying to do could be helpful.
Um, we, like Kidman said, we had our first meeting with Mr. Trumbull yesterday during lunch. And we discussed IHS grading policy in terms of how our finals are weighted as twenty percent of our grades and multiple different assessment types to create assessments that are more relevant to students' lives and students' experiences outside of school and what can potentially serve us the best when we move out of school. As you guys saw in the survey, it was, um, very important to everybody. Um, and we have a girls' swim meet going on right now, a tennis match tomorrow and Thursday. And the boys' tennis team is three O, so, no, the boy.
Soccer.
Sorry. The boys' soccer team is three O, and I think they are currently in their away game at Omira. So we're wishing them all good luck.
Fantastic. Thank you, Ithaca High School, LACS.
Hi, everyone. I'm Stella. Um, my pronouns are she/her, and I am a junior at LACS. Um, and we've had a lot of great things going on since this year started. Um, one being something that I myself have been working on, um, with the support of Zara and a couple other of our student leaders, is, um, creating a democratic process for board reps. Once again, we've had this in the past. Um, kind of stopped happening, and it's a big goal of mine, um, to make sure that our student body and community is reflected in who represents us here. Um, so with that being said, me and Zara will be here, um, until we have all of that sorted out. And hopefully beyond that, if we get elected, fingers crossed. Um, so yeah, and then we also had our first all-student orientation, um, where students had the opportunity to lead a- activities. We had, um, quarter school meetings where we were able to break down the L, the A, the C, and the S, um, and what those mean to our school and what, um, those look like within our school community. Um, as well as continue the conversation from our infusion week last year. Um, and have the opportunity to go over our philosophies and goals. Um, and the discrepancies between them and our practice, as well as where we're upholding them. Um, and I really appreciated seeing, um, the passion from both returning students and new students. Um, and the interest in our democracy and alternative education overall. Uh, makes me very hopeful for future generations of LACS and what they'll be able to accomplish and change. Speaking of intergenerational.
Hi, I'm Zara. I use she/her pronouns. Uh, I'm in my junior year. And I've been on this board now for three years, so it's good to be back. Um, so speaking of intergenerational, yeah, hopefully. Um, intergenerational relationships, we today, um, met in our family groups, which is like our homeroom. Um, with one being a high school family group and the other one being a middle school family group. Um, with one being a high school family group and the other one being a middle school family group. A crucial part of LACS is that intergenerational connection. For students to have forms of mentorship from a very early age from older students, it creates this legacy of certain characteristics and philosophies that get passed down rather through, you know, a program or you know, just all school meetings and that kind of thing, but actually through conversation. Um, we recently have been a part of this program that we've recently started of making mathematics move forward throughout all of our school districts, or all of our schools in the area. Um, LACS students have been going to IHS for Algebra II, which is she is one of them. Um, and Neurids kids have been coming to our pre-calculus program. Um, making that connection through math has been great so far, um, I'm a huge fan of it, are you a fan of it?
I love it.
So. Um, yeah, so that's LACS so far.
Well, first, welcome student reps, we're looking forward, we always learn so much. And then we ask board members questions, uh, responses um, to our student updates. Joe.
Yeah.
I, I miss, I couldn't understand what you said about Mr. Trumbull telling you about something about twenty percent of the grade. So I'm curious about that.
Oh, um, so the current system that many of our teachers employ is that we have four quarters and a final, and each of those is twenty percent of our grade. Some teachers choose to not have a final, in which case every quarter is twenty-five percent of our grade. Um, but we are working to see if that is truly the best option. And if there are potentially other ways to go about it other than having everybody sit in Q gym in sweltering June heat with like fifty fans going and a bunch of white noise and trying to uh, figure out trick problems. Thank you. Thank you.
I, I was hoping it wasn't attitude or something, twenty percent of the grades.
Uh, other board responses or questions?
You guys feel like you know who to contact if you have questions between board meetings?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
And Ms. Bergman definitely knows who to contact. Who was just recognized. Or can I say, Ms. Bergman, how many?
Plenty.
Twenty?
Twenty-five.
Yeah, yeah.
Twenty-five years of service to the City School District.
Yeah. Um, and I, LACS students just usually show up on your door saying, this is what we want you to do. Um, but great question, any other question from board members? We look forward to um, engaging, to learning together and to continue a conversation and dialogue as well, so, so thank you all very much. Um, we're going to continue on with our agenda. Um, this brings us to the consent agenda and uh, we will entertain motions.
Okay, I'll move to approve all consent agenda items listed in the consent agenda. Consideration of accounts, personnel report, students and minutes of previous meeting as presented.
Second.
Moved by uh, Katie, seconded by Jill.
Nope, Erin.
Exactly the point I was trying to make. Thank you very much for the correction. Uh. Questions, discussion, conversation? Hearing none, we'll call the question, all in favor of the consent agenda? You have that? All opposed? All abstaining? Thank you very much, the consent agenda is approved. Uh, we will now move to uh, the superintendent report, Dr. Brown.
Thank you, Professor, um, and being mindful of the time, I wish to yield my time to my colleagues to my right who also have school early in the morning. So I wish to uh, capture the district improvement plan as part of the superintendent update if I may please.
Fantastic. And I feel like I have to begin with a personal story. Before the school year began, I saw Mr. Harrington eating on the commons. I said something to my grandchild that I saw Mr. H and she said, don't lie to me, Papa. So she is so excited that you're back. Thank you, Jackie, thank you. Well, we look forward to your presentation, please.
Hi, everybody.
I'm Lily Talkit, for those who don't know me, I'm the deputy superintendent with the Ethica City School District. And I've got some fabulous colleagues here with me.
Lisa Sahasidh, Equity and Diversity Officer.
Good evening, I'm Keith Harrington, I'm the principal at Enfield Elementary School.
Hello, hi, Jackie Richardson, Principal of Beverly J. Martin Elementary School.
And this evening, we are here to answer any questions that you all have regarding the plans that Lisa so beautifully talked about last time on August twenty-second. For those who need a little bit of background, it's definitely all linked right there in the Board Doc's agenda. Uh, but the gist is, based on some test scores, we have two of our amazing elementary schools have specific plans that were collaboratively developed um, and ultimately need the board's approval. Um, so I'm going to turn it over to Keith and Jackie, they're just going to talk briefly a little bit about the collaborative process they embarked upon um, in order to create these plans. We'll just talk for a couple of minutes and then we'll take questions.
Thank you. Uh, good evening, so the collaborative process, so uh, uh, Enfield is designated as a CSI school. And uh, we've had the uh, privilege, I would say, of really engaging uh, towards the end of last school year and all summer long in meetings and surveys. Um, specifically uh, engaging, you know, I was watching the Learning Forward presentation and there's so much embedded there. Um, engaging our students in surveys, engaging our families in both surveys and also um, inviting them to uh, various uh, meetings. Uh, they were, have been engaged in our planning all along. And then over the summer, in our implementation process at Enfield, we had about four meetings this summer. Uh, each one focused on a different aspect of the work that we're doing. Um, really looking at uh, at our daily attendance, at our test scores and at our family and student engagement. And in all of that, you can see the parts of Learning Forward, obviously. Um, trying to increase at the elementary school level our knowledge about how our, how our students are experiencing, what we are delivering. Um, I like to share, any chance I can, one of the most important things that I learned uh, from a professor once. He told me that it doesn't matter what the student learns, or it doesn't matter what you teach, it only matters what the student learns. And I reflect on that often, um, it's almost a Zen Cohen for me, you know, but thinking about that as an educator, I can stand and I think what I'm delivering, I think about what I'm delivering and I have a target for what the student is learning. But then taking those times to check and see if the student's experiencing the same thing. And I think we saw a lot of that in that survey data here as well. Um, so we had uh, most of the staff at various times engaged. Uh, and then we had five or six caregivers regularly engaged with also the P, outside of just the PTA. Um, engaging with our PTA as well. And um, and then we surveyed our third, fourth and fifth graders in particular. Uh, we look to expand that in the future. But I'd say that that's, that's the biggest collaborative piece, then. Things have grown out of that, um, so there's a, a community group in Enfield called, uh, they call themselves ARE, Anti-Racist Enfield. Um, who've been very active and have been looking for ways to engage with the school as well as the Enfield Community Center. And so um, by both design as well as necessity, this summer, we held many of our meetings at Enfield Community Center as the school was under construction for the geothermal. And it wound up actually opening up incredible opportunities to bring um, a very diverse group of infielders to the community center and also engage with uh, with the wider community there. Enfield is still seen very much as a community school. Um, we have so many of, we, multi-generational um, families at the school who recount going to school there um, all throughout these years. And so lots and lots of interest there and that was, so, lots of, lots of surveying and then into the work and families and community have been involved all along that way too, which has been really exciting.
Thank you, Keith. Hello, good evening. Um, this has been a really eye-opening opportunity. Um, as we looked at um, the information um, at BJM, we have been designated as a, a TSI school, which stands for Targeted Support and Improvement. Um, specifically for the subgroup of Black or African-American students. Um, so having looked, looked at that data and uh, it, it raised a lot of questions for us to look very deeply at and um, really dig in. And this, this work is layered, it is historical and um, involves our entire community. Um, and so that is the approach that we have taken is a community approach. Um, also, as my colleague had mentioned, this is um, will not be solved by one person or a few people. Um, and uh, that really invoked to us to be able to, to look at who's not represented and whose voice are we not hearing? Um, and so that's our students. Um, that's our Black students specifically, um, have been underserved and underheard. And also their families. Um, and caregivers, as noted in the survey responses, um, and as some of you have noticed as well. Um, there's an under-representation uh, in terms of the engagement of our um, Black and Brown families, specifically Black families in surveys. So um, we wanted to really in, encourage, celebrate and use this as an opportunity to, to hear voices and to act upon those who have not um, been served well. We met uh, multiple times as a committee of stakeholders that involved uh, staff. Um, broad, broad staff, meaning so educators, teachers, um, other staff members, ESPs, um, other support persons, um, caregivers, family members and community members were all asked to participate. Um, it was uh, twenty were asked or so. Um, and eleven were consistent, eleven or so were consistent in um, the meetings that occurred over the summer. In that time, um, we identified two main um, uh, targets. And that would be um, engagement and specifically looking at caregiver engagement in school community of Black families. Um, but overall, based on the surveys um, and information and communication and data, um, that, that the engagement uh, could most certainly be improved. Um, and curriculum. And mostly because we know that um, that is looking at the scores of uh, the ELA scores and the math scores, that uh, surely we need to look at our curriculum. Um, and making, ensuring that it's culturally and linguistically responsive. So those two um, uh, areas of focus were all agreed upon. And then we created a plan moving forward, which you have a copy of. Um, and again, how are we as a school? We had to create plans as how we are going to encourage student voice and look at it more than just surveys. Um, and as we know, young folks, particularly young students, um, and Black students may not always respond well to some of the survey questions, right? Particularly if they've been created by um, not people, people of non um, uh, Black ethnicity and, and descendant. So um, thinking about how do we um, encourage more of our students to have voice? And, and um, part of that is looking at advisor groups, creating very much like what we have here. Um, and student-led groups, um, and looking at STEM work and encouraging, again, celebrating um, the learning and the curriculum improvements that we hope to make in the areas of math and literacy. Questions?
Yes, question for board members, and again, a reminder that uh, we had a presentation about those plans on August twenty-second. So this is the first time we're seeing or hearing about these plans, but they do, not saying they require board approval on a resolution. But before we get to that, questions for our guests who have waited here so patiently, well into the evening with school tomorrow.
I just, I have one question about um, I think about, not necessarily about the test scores, but about the content of the material that's on the test that led to the lower scores in the first place. Um, so, so I mean, the, you know, do, doing well on a test is not necessarily important unless you look at the test and you look at the questions and you look at the content and you decide that it's very important that the students know that content. So I was just wondering like if any or what efforts were made to kind of go back, look through that information, look at the test scores, look at the questions that students got wrong, try to decide whether or not we care about that content and that students need to, need to learn that. I see that there's some, there's some goals in the plan, like five to ten percent improvement, you know, year over year. Um, but I guess I was just wondering about the, like a content analysis and a, and a weighing in on, you know, how important that content is.
That's a great question because Adam, you're absolutely right, right? This is, does, does what New York State required for assessment, does that also align with our values? And as educators, are those truly the skills, strategies, understandings that we, that we know kiddos need in order for, for later success? So excellent, excellent question. Um, so there's a few things about New York State which are really interesting um, because there is in the three through eight testing battery for mathematics and for um, English Language Arts and uh, now Science, which is pushed to uh, third through fifth in this interesting way. Um, there's uh, there's a limited ability for educators to go through and look at each question.
That's right.
So, so because there is, so um, there are banks of questions, right? And former tests that are available, right? So old regions exams, old three through eight tests that are available, that are online, that are public. Um, but the tests are secure because they try to reuse questions.
Sure.
So we can look at some of, um, we get like a general sense of like the standard that was associated with it or the big idea or the concept. Um, and I, I um, I certainly can allow these folks to speak to that. But there's, there's a sort of a level of mystery that's a little odd, that's less like, um, you know, admin, administering a Wyatt or a Woodcock Johnson or some sort of um, assessment that we might do for psychological or academic testing um, in the special education worlds.
Um, that's an excellent question. And uh, I will also say that um, as we're looking at our specific subgroup, um, zero percent were proficient in math. Zero percent.
That, yeah, that, I think the only thing I would add to is that I think, I, I agree, I think it's important. I also think that our test scores were such.
I also think that our test scores were such that the indication is really, um, the way I'll say it is, it, it's given us just more of an opportunity to have the conversations that we were already having to deepen those conversations. And you know, it really obviously not happy about the designation, but actually very happy about um, the resources available to us to, for the work that was actually already underway, right? And this was um, that, that learning forward work and re-engaging with communities, re-engaging students and families, trying to find new ways forward after COVID, but also trying to find new ways forward as we continue to um, unpack what it means to be part of um, an institution that's institutionally racist and classist. And trying to reimagine what that looks like. And so for us, it, you know, we look back and we look at those, uh, we look at the test scores, we look at what we can there. Um, but it was really clear already that we But it was really clear already that we needed to work on alignment vertically and horizontally through the school and through the district. And those conversations were underway, which was exciting. And we've, I feel like we've been able to move very quickly forward with that because of the support and because of that intention already. And then I don't want to say like one group's more affected than the others. Elementary has been, I think, hard hit by COVID, the kids, they just, a lot, they just missed a lot, a lot of school. And for kids that don't have like that, that longer breadth to make it relative to their experience, some of, some of our young people just, we needed to reimagine what it was like to engage them and bring them into school and then support them to move forward. So I think those, yeah, sorry, that was a little long-winded, but.
That's okay.
One of the things I learned in graduate school, and someone can disabuse me of this if it's no longer true, was that the single most clear indicator of academic success, however you define that, was time on task, was instructional time. So even, even a stronger relationship than parental advantage or, or, you know, preschool, or all sorts of other things that we commonly think of as being indicative of academic success was time on task. And, and it's interesting to me that I'm not hearing discussion about increasing instructional time. Now, maybe I've missed something there, but why are we not looking at that as, as a way to, I mean, unless there's been some sort of community-wide agreement to not care about achievement tests or academic progress as it has been defined through testing and through that sort of thing? I'm curious as to why we wouldn't be looking at that.
We are.
Good. So what's happening?
So here's what's happening. We parted the celebration of learning, right? And thinking creatively about how to engage our students with math and in the curriculum of math. Part of that is looking at our extended day and re-envisioning what extended day looks like. And so in our plan, at BJM's plan, we are looking at bringing in STEAM or STEM lab and having opportunities for students to, along with literacy, engage in science, technology, engineering, art, and math as, as an extension. So that's, that's part of it in terms of the, in thinking about how do we creatively look at extending the day, right, in instructional time? And also seeding it deeply in joy, and also having it being culturally engaging and responsive for our students. So that is part of the work, that is part of our plan at BJM.
Yeah, similar, I would say that, you know, also thinking about how much stamina elementary school kids have as far as extending the day, where we shifted our extended day program to incorporate both the engaging pieces, the knitting club and the music club and those things, but also incorporating tutoring in that time as well, and then bringing that extended day actually up into lunch and recess as well, thinking about students who, you know, we're, nobody walks to Enfield. And so all of our students have to be transported home. And so for some students, that's actually super limiting. They have to go home right after school, other students can stay, and some students have the endurance to stay and continue tutoring others. So that's trying to bring that into the day and create those opportunities for teachers and students to not only do the work and have some smaller groups, but also build relationships at that time and deepen those relationships, making sure that, you know, all of our students, 100% of our students feel like they have someone at the school, adult at the school that they trust and support.
I also wanted to add that time on task doesn't just mean an extended day, but increasing engagement, right? So, right, so the child who is falling asleep after two minutes is no longer falling asleep because the quality of the instruction has changed. So that is culturally appropriate and responsive. So they're up and they're moving and they're talking, and they're interacting in a way that allows them to stay awake and stay engaged, and that's going to increase their time on task.
Yeah, thank you, Lisa. I couldn't agree more. I just wanted to hear some explicit discussion of that. And Keith, to your question or your mention of the endurance of elementary school students, I spent my career, as you know, probably know, in the elementary schools in this district. And for better or worse, nobody's going home or very few people are going home anymore and eating snacks and playing catch in the backyard with their parents. An awful lot of the kids either already stay after school or go to daycare or go to GAC or somewhere else. So I'm simply not going to accept that anymore. Thank you.
Okay, and I would note that both of the school-level plans also mentioned, one was absences, right? And one was chronic absenteeism, that's how they were. Or one was set attendance, the others were chronic absenteeism, which also would contribute to time on task. But my question is, I'm curious if the CLRT programming addresses the testing environment and belonging in that environment? Because, I mean, for better or for worse, these kids are sitting in tests, right? And so I'm curious as to whether or not it helps students be comfortable in it's a high-anxiety, high-stress environment? And just if it does, that's great. So that was my curiosity.
High stress is great.
Medium stress is great.
Medium stress?
High stress is bad, low is.
It's great if it covers.
Yeah. I'll take a, I'll take a first jump at that one and then probably pass it on to Lisa as well, because she certainly has engaged more with our culturally and linguistically responsive professional development. And I will say that if we think about the 16 cultural behaviors that Dr. Shragi Hawley has really taught us about over the last 10 years, nine years or so, we are, we've had a lot of experience as educators engaging with and really understanding deeply, and then ensuring our kids understand deeply and like why we are, why we are doing what we're doing around behaviors that are both traditional or school-based, right? So, you know, I want to say raise a righteous hand, right? As a, as a single person speaks at a time and is turn-taking, right? There's independent work time, right? And there are times when we have to engage kids in a total range of ways during a particular lesson or throughout the day. And we're just super clear about why we're doing it and asking kids to connect with their own cultural backgrounds and understandings, and whether this is pushing them or this feels really comfortable. And so there's a lot of metacognition around those cultural behaviors also as folks go through the coaching too. So could I say that across the board, absolutely everybody feels belonging in that? At the moment, we're not there yet. But what I like about our professional development model now is it allows for that range.
I'm going to add something just from, again, our own personal experience, because this idea is sort of stressing what the testing environment looks like and the idea of time on task. That, you know, beautiful third grader, right? Eight-year-old comes home, sees Mr. Austin Hootie the first day and writes, sends a note. And so I'm asking her how her day is, and her day's amazing. She's so excited to be back in school, meet new friends and see her old friends. And then she pauses for a second and takes a breath and says, "But I don't want to take a test at the end of the year." So if that is what we're teaching on day one, that gave me great pause about the emphasis that we're putting on this test, even while I know it's an important measure, it's not the measure. And I would try to, I was trying to encourage this eight-year-old that we are in a privileged position. I don't care what you score on this test, I want you to learn. And I'm wondering how we find the balance between a measure where we're trying to encourage young folks to learn. Of course, they need skills developed, they need to be able to read, they need to be able to do math skills. I don't know about you all, but I don't want an eighth grader or eight-year-old coming home the first day already with test anxiety. And so I'm trying to find that balance between, we know we have work to do, and school should be something where I learn and find joy. I'm sorry, I'm going to jump out of that. No. No, I, I, I think this is going to be a good conversation for our board to engage and follow the journey and have you all continue to inform us and so we can learn with you and give our feedback as best as we can as well. And I imagine most of my colleagues would like to be part of the situation, right? Not just getting the, not just getting the updates, right? That we're committed to the work that needs to be done for our young folks. I didn't even know that Mr. Harris is still here, Mr. Harris.
There were still, I think, students went along the sail of the ocean blue. Right, and the answer was 1492. Didn't make the new behaviors. Eventually, he got inside a test, like, shit, did not pass that in America, actually. But were asked, why would the, why would the Italians, no, why would the Spanish be so desperate to compete with the other European forces that they would hire an ex-convict Italian to go searching the wrong way around the world? Right, and that, of course, I'm paraphrasing, but the context that was required to answer that question, the grasp of historic information was relevant. I would love to hear from our executives, when the time is right, how they feel about the tests themselves. Because I don't care what a student gets on a bad test, it is an irrelevant measure. If it's a good test, then we get to the secondary, tertiary questions about whether or not it's culturally responsive, whether or not it would include information from a Methodist middle-class perspective that a kid who just wouldn't have, right? So there are levels to this. And I know we've also developed our own code, our own parallel assessments. And I'm not sure if the administration is willing to begin sharing results of their own assessments with us. But it's high time we stop just as a governance body with our, with our level of insight asking whether or not we still care about testing. I will never care about poor test.
I would dare.
I'd like to say something.
I'm not going to tell you no, Adam.
Okay, I just have one, just a response to that, which is that I completely agree that if a test is irrelevant and a test is arbitrary, then it cannot be meaningful. And that's why I always come back to the same question, which is that we have to come to an agreement about what content needs to be taught and then how to measure whether or not that content is taught. That's the only question. It doesn't really matter about, you know, what is used as the outcome variable? But if you're in a class and you need to learn fractions, as just an easy example, you can measure that at the end of the year in an unbiased way. Did that student learn fractions? Do they need to know that Christopher Columbus sailed the ocean blue in 1492? No. So that, that's the only thing that I would say. So I agree with you completely. If the outcome measure is garbage, then we would never want to use that outcome measure. So I totally agree.
I would dare say this is probably a topic for an additional board meeting for us to engage, or a curriculum meeting, which probably seems most relevant, whom I.
High school, on the end.
Oh.
Our friend on the end.
Fantastic.
I would just like to add on to what the other board member said about testing. As a person, I've often felt like making a kid sit down and take a test isn't always most objective metric to how they have learned. Some kids can really demonstrate their learning, like, sitting down and taking multiple-choice history tests, but others would prefer to write or are more verbally inclined and would like to present in front of a class. And I feel like one way to make assessments and finding out whether people have actually learned things is to make them present their learning in the way that really works best for them. Thanks.
Thank you for sharing.
I also just want to say thank you to Keith Hammington and to Jackie Richardson for rallying their communities and producing documents that, I guess Lily said last, last board meeting, they really made lemonade out of their lunch. So thank you very much, I appreciate your work.
So before we continue, board members, there is a motion to approve the Comprehensive Improvement Plan and the Comprehensive Education Plan for both Beverly J. Martin and Enfield. And if it works for the board, we'll entertain motions.
District Comprehensive Improvement Plan for Enfield Elementary School and Beverly J. Martin Elementary School for the 2023, 2024 academic year.
Second.
Moved by Maura, seconded by Jill. Further discussion, questions, conversation? Hearing none, all in favor? That passes unanimously by Michael. Thank you all very much, thank you very much. Have a great school year, and we look forward to working together.
Thank you so much.
We have a couple more agenda items on our agenda. Is it the will of the board to take a break or to continue through?
Keep going.
All right, then we'll move to Agenda Item 11.2, Policy 4327, 4327.R. And I will yield to my colleague, Maura Lane. The policies are not going to.
Oh, 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 sorry.
Homebound instruction.
So we are taking a look at for a first reading, Policy 4327 and 4327.R regarding alternate homebound instruction and regulation. And we have Dan Ryan and Carrie Burke here to take us through it.
Hello, good evening. Welcome to be from Maine, Carrie Burke, I'm the Director of Health Services and Wellness.
I'm Dan Ryan, I'm the administration officer.
So we have been forwarding you an existing policy that we're proposing revisions to based on changes by the Board of Regents adopted in February around homebound or alternate instruction. I'm just going to review briefly at a high level the changes that we've put forward, really to bring ourselves in alignment with the state regulations. One key, one key piece of provision is the increase in hours for elementary and secondary students. Previously was five hours a week or one hour a day. That is now, currently in this school year, 10 hours a week or two hours a day. Similarly, for secondary, it was previously 10 hours a week or two hours a day. That has been increased to 15 hours a week or three hours a day. And let me just back up for a second. What we're talking about for the purposes of this are students who are unable to attend school for at least 10 days within a three-month period. This can be for reasons of discipline or medical or mental health concerns. The other key piece is that it requires caregivers who are, who, whose child is absent due to medical or mental health concerns to provide a release for us to be able to engage with their treating provider, whether that be a mental health practitioner or a physical health practitioner. It also outlined timeframes for reviewing requests and responding to them. And we also, in combing through our policy, revise the language to be gender-neutral. There are places where we refer to the superintendent or their designee, his or her designee have been changed to their. In addition, any references made to physician have been shifted to healthcare provider to be inclusive of both physical and mental health practitioners. So those individuals who have under. So those individuals who have under their licensing ability to diagnose and treat are those individuals who can also make recommendations about a student's need to be absent from school. So that would be inclusive, not just physicians, but also NPs and psychologists as well. I think that's the high-level summary. I'm going to turn it over to Dan.
I'm going to talk about the logistics of the policy briefly. So in the policy, and this is, this is our practice right now also as well, tutoring for students. We go to students' homes, we go to hospital settings, we go, we can, we go to public facilities. And we always worked with families for a mutually convenient time. And as well, we do virtually, we provide virtual instruction as well if that's requested as well. We, we work with the family, whatever works with them, we try to provide. Also tutoring for disciplinary reasons. In this policy talks about how it's provided during, during the student suspension. There's a few other things that we've updated here that we're going to make every effort possible to assign an alternative instructor, instructor, excuse me, within forty-eight hours of the suspension. Or within five days of notification of the school, of the student's medical condition. Or within five days of when the parent or guardian requests. And we'll work very hard to make sure that we're within those timeframes. At the elementary level, the teacher's going to be, or the teacher is responsible, they are, for providing the alternative instructor with instructional materials, maybe restorative justice steps. But at the secondary level, it's the child's school counselor. And this is just a way of us connecting the instructor to the school, of course. And we're working, Carrie and I have worked really closely with the high school. Most of the requests that we get are from the secondary. And we've worked closely with the high school and their admin to streamline the process where they've already started to make changes, where they document the work that the alternative instructor is providing, the assignment, and we'll, we'll do some more tracking and monitoring. It just won't, it won't be just tracking and monitoring. It'll be a vehicle to communicate with the teacher as well and to document. And I, I think that's it for the policy. Please let us know if you have any questions.
Yeah, questions from any board members?
Well, I have a question. Thank you very much. For both medical and if it's disciplinary suspension, the hours have increased. Yes.
I should add to the, um, one key provision is that these hours are in effect sort of compulsory. So students may receive less than the required. They may receive less than ten hours at the elementary level or fifteen hours at secondary, if requested by their parent guardian and supported by documentation from the provider.
And a follow-up question, if in any situation, let's say for disciplinary suspension, if they are not, the family's not notified until seventy-two hours. I know you're going to make every effort, forty-eight, and I hope forty-eight. If they're not notified, do they still get those hours like banked?
Yes. If, if we're, if we're not able to meet that timeframe, we would work with the family on that. But we're going to, we're going to make sure we meet that timeframe. We're also looking at recruiting alternative instructors as well.
Thank you.
Through different ways.
I'll remind the board, this is the first reading. This, if it is approved, it will go back to the policy committee. So folks should join our policy committee to add additional, ask additional questions before it comes for adoption. But if hearing that there are no other questions, we'll call.
I just want to make a comment. This is about process that it would be really helpful when the documents that are in board docs are clearly labeled that this is a revised draft and when it was revised because that would help. Spend a little time looking at stuff that was old.
And our apologies, I think you got one draft that didn't have some edits. We quickly made that. We quickly solved that very recently. Sorry about that error.
And I found it very helpful when Tricia and Carrie sent out an invitation to the Google Doc that has the track changes. That was, that has all of the documentation as far as the dates and things.
Okay, I didn't see.
Was it via email? Like you would have gotten an invitation. It's kind of.
I guess, yeah, maybe I did.
You're not the only one. Yeah.
A process recommendation moving forward is maybe not to do the invitation from Google because I think people see that it comes from Google and it gets caught in spam.
Okay.
So we can find another way of doing it, just including the link in a separate email. But I'll work with folks about that. I think that may happen to more of us than not.
But sure.
But I understand, I, I, I did receive it.
I, I may need an alternative instructor for this process.
I'm giving you a call. We'll work on it. But about the policy, if there's no more questions or discussion about the policy, then all in favor of?
We need to move. Sorry.
I'm trying to move. That's what I'm. We'll enter, we'll entertain motions.
I move to approve policies four three two seven and four three two seven R, alternate homebound instruction and regulation for first reading.
Second.
Take it, Kate.
Second, second.
Moved by Morris, seconded by Katie. Uh, if there are no more questions, all in favor of first reading? Passing unanimously. Thank you. We look forward to the second reading. It brings us to agenda item one eleven point three, policy five five zero zero, protection of privacy of student records for a first reading.
Hi, Katie Hart, Public Information Specialist. So we currently have our media clearance set up as an opt-in. So those forms get sent home and parents send them, parents and caregivers send them back in, either indicating yes or no. So we are hoping to add language to this policy fifty-five hundred to, that would make it an opt-out. It is a very cumbersome process to check every photo that we post on social media, on our website and newsletters. We're essentially checking photos in school tool against the photos our photographers are taking. We also don't get many forms back. So there are hundreds of students at the high school. We have a hundred no's and hundreds of nothing, which effectively means we can't post those photos. It's particularly a problem with prom, graduation and people wanting to see those photos at the end of the year. It's a little less of an issue at the elementary level, but it certainly has caused a bit of a backup in our office, so.
Thank you for the background. Questions from board members? Is this, is this in keeping with what other school districts do, that they do an opt out rather than an opt-in?
Yeah, and I looked at school districts in New York State at about our size and they're all opt-out.
Additional questions from board members? Mike, yes, please.
Other questions. So is this for any and all photos in general? Or it's set for military recruiters, release of directory information? Cause at the beginning of the policy document that we have in board docs, it says release of directory information to military recruiters. And when I went back to look at the policy, because since it had two acronyms that FERPA and NCLB, I just wanted to check back to make sure it was actually spelled out. So I was thinking this was for military recruiters, so.
I think the title I have is release of directory information and information to military recruiters is under one.
I think it has language that speaks to both situations.
Yeah.
Hearing none, we'll entertain motions.
Okay, I will move policy five five zero zero, protection of privacy of student records for first reading.
Second.
Moved by Morris, seconded by Adam. Again, this is a first reading. It will go back to the policy committee. We can ask different questions at that time. Any more discussion? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor of a first reading? All opposed?
I'm just abstaining from now because I didn't fully read it and I need clarification.
Great. Did you catch that, Tricia? We're good. Fantastic. Thank you very much. We'll continue on with our agenda, eleven point four, a resolution designated a voting delegate for the NISBA convention, convention annual business meeting. This is virtual and we have to see if we, if any of us are available to participate and or want to participate. I believe Moira sent around her report from last year. Moira's done it before. I've done it. Eldred, I believe you've done it as well. I don't know if any other board members has done. Aaron's done it.
Would you like to try and do better?
No.
Right. Moira's unavailable.
Yeah, I'm, I'm at my minister's wedding in California.
Do we have any other board member who's willing to?
I, I loathe the idea of it, but I will do it if no else.
Jill, we will make you cookies and make you something else.
Stop right there.
So before Jill changes her mind, can we entertain a motion?
I move to, you've got Jill Tripp as the voting delegate for the NISBA Convention Annual Business Meeting on October sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
Second.
By Morris, seconded by Adam. Any additional discussion? Ask the question. All in favor?
We're going to learn so much.
Fantastic. That is unanimous. Thank you, Jill. We really appreciate it. Next, agenda item eleven point five is a resolution to approve amendments to Tetra Tech Agreement. Hello, Amanda. Thank you very much.
Hi, everyone.
You can let us know what these change orders are.
They are not, no, 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 it's not change orders. These are just amendments to the fixed fee contracts that we have. We actually, if you notice, they are amended in three, four and five, which means that we already had amendment one and two. This is a common practice. And when we ask the architecture firm to do more for us in the capital project world, this allows a fee schedule for those contingencies or incidental budgets to be prescribed so that we know what we're paying for. So amendment three is part of phase three A, which is the BJM and Enfield Elementary work. BJM, remember, it's the windows and masonry. Enfield Elementary, it's the roofing and entry bathroom improvements. So there were, this is already work that we authorized through A C M. We know that Tetra Tech has been working on it. Again, this is just prescribing sort of that hourly rate. Amendment four is for phase three D, which is the HVAC, the STEM work and the site work at Ithaca High School, as well as the Fall Creek Playground redesign. And then the cafeteria upgrades to both BJM and Fall Creek. Remember that that got repackaged into two different phases. So there was a lot of additional work with State Ed to do that, as well as the design of those temporary classrooms so that we had swing space. That was an addition. So just remember that that's why that amendment four is going to be there. And then amendment five is actually not in the capital project. It's actually that Northeast Elementary project that we are using capital reserve money from not this budget vote, but the prior year budget vote. That's all completed, but that was in addition to, they did all the construction management of that as well.
That was a retaining wall.
Correct. That was a retaining wall, the place surface outside of the kindergarten classrooms. So that's what they're asking for.
Any questions for Amanda? Entertain motions.
I move to approve amendments to Tetra Tech, Tetra Tech agreements for projects at Beverly J. Martin Elementary, Enfield Elementary, Ithaca High School, Fall Creek Elementary and Northeast Elementary as presented.
Second.
Moved by Katie, seconded by Jill. Any additional questions? All in favor? Passing unanimously. Thank you very much. Appreciate it, Amanda. And then last on our agenda for this evening is a resolution to approve expenditures to attend the two twenty twenty-three live virtual workshop by NISBA. NISBA is offering a number of live workshops. Folks may be aware, and this one is on the superintendent evaluation. And I should ask, before we entertain motions, all board members not, may not be aware of this workshop, even though Tricia does a phenomenal job of making us aware that these are out there. Again, there's a whole list of additional workshops as well. But if there's any other board member that also wants to attend this evaluation workshop, now would be the time to put your name forward so we can amend the resolution.
I can't attend because I'm working with this. Is there a way? I don't think they record these, so if someone can take copious notes.
They also, if you sign up, even if you don't attend, you can get the, uh, the documents, the slide deck. Is that, I mean, on the other hand, you could also share the slide deck.
Right. Right.
Yeah. NISBA won't be happy with us sharing the slide deck, but we'll share it with all board members.
Do they request that you don't?
Uh, we don't talk about those things.
I don't even know what I just said.
I move to approve expenditures for board members Katie, Sean, Adam and Moira to attend the twenty twenty-three live virtual superintendent evaluation workshop on September twenty-second, two thousand twenty.
Second.
Moved by Karen, seconded by Jill. Any discussion, questions, conversation? All in favor? The motion passes. We'll worry about other business when we have other business and we have upcoming meetings soon, but thank you all very much. We will bring this meeting to a close and we'll see everybody soon.